We start, we shall start now the last session today. A special session, the gravitational wave universe. As it was announced, we have two talks, two guests, two nice presentations. This one is Joanna Nikolicz, partial simplectic quasi-states in the ambient of cotangent bundles. Please, Joanna, I would ask you to proceed to your talk.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Professor Remy Illich. I would like to thank the organizers for invitation. So I'm going to talk about partial quasimorphisms and partial simplectic quasi-states in the ambient of cotangent bundles. This is a joint work with Jana Katic and Darko Milinkovic. So outline, first I will state main results. And then I will explain some mathematical notion that I use in my talk. I will explain some definitions, some constructions, and at the end I will exactly define these partial quasimorphisms and these partial simplectic quasi-states that I mentioned in the in the title. So this is going too fast for me, and I don't know how to. I probably should stop it this way. So main results are that I defined, we find some partial quasimorphism on the Hamilton, on the group of Hamiltonian diffeomorphisms on the cotangent bundle T star M. I can see this cotangent bundle actually as a phase space, and this hamon cotangent bundle, I can see as some motion on a phase space. Loosely speaking, you can see here that I have some N. It is a closed submanifold of my original manifold, Riemann manifold M that I started with. So I can, I can define this partial quasimorphism for any closed submanifold. Closed meaning compact without the boundary. What is a quasimorphism? It is a to say, easiest explanation is it is a homomorphism up to an error. So if I have a homomorphism to, to set to the field R, this sigma N of composition phi and psi would be equal to sigma of phi plus sigma of psi for homomorphism. But this is not a homomorphism, and the definition of quasimorphisms is that this is bounded with some constant, this difference. And I will explain later why do I have here a partial word? It means that this constant here, this defect is not constant on the, it is not the same constant on the entire group of Hamiltonian diffeomorphism. But I can find the constant for some, if I, for some subgroup of this domain. What was really interesting for me here is that I can define something called partial simplectic quasi-state. So that physical term notion appeared purely from mathematical construction. This simplectic quasi-state is a simplectic analog or a simplectic version of topological quasi-state. It is a map from group of smooth, completely supported function on T star M. I can see them as a Hamiltonians. And for every Hamiltonian, this map is equal to this quasimorphism on the, of the Hamiltonian diffeomorphism that is generated with this Hamiltonian H. I will give more details later, but this is the main result. And why do I have here word partial? Because this quasi-state zeta is not linear on Poisson commuting subalgebra, but it satisfies weaker condition that zeta of the sum of this, of two Hamiltonians is equal to the zeta of the first one when they commute, and when the support of the Hamiltonian K is displacable. Displaçable means that I can find some Hamiltonian diffeomorphisms that completely moves from itself this support of K. So this is the, this is a story about main results, and now I'm going to to the next slide to explain these mathematical terms that I used here and to explain some construction. So what is a cotangent bundle? Cotangent bundle, I can define over any smooth closed manifold. And I didn't point out here the fact that I'm working with some Riemann manifolds, so I need Riemann structure, but I omit that fact here. And I take closed, smooth submanifold N. Closed means it doesn't have a boundary, and it is compact, as I already mentioned. And what is my ambient? It is the cotangent bundle. What is it? It is the union of the T Q star M. T Q star M is a dual of a tangent space to the manifold M at point Q. What is here important is that this cotangent bundle has a structure of a simplectic manifold. So the simplectic story comes in here. It is really important, and everything that I use here is a technique from simplectic topology. Leuville one form is locally defined as a PDQ. This is a term that appears in action functional. And because of that, it is important for me. This omega is differential of Leuville one form, and it satisfies some additional, some properties. This form is closed, non-degenerate, it is a two-form, is a differential of one form. And when I have a manifold with closed, non-degenerate two-form on it, it is called a simplectic manifold. So I want to point out here that this cotangent bundle that I'm working with has a simplectic structure. And I mentioned Hamiltonian diffeomorphisms, Hamiltonian stuff like that. I will just briefly say what is it. I'm working with Hamiltonians that depend on time. And they have compact structure, and they're smooth. Everything is smooth here. My manifold that I start with is smooth, my submanifold is smooth, everything is smooth. This Hamiltonian has a compact support since this T star M is not compact manifold. When I have that kind of Hamiltonian, I can define a Hamiltonian vector field. The unique vector field that when I do an inner product with my two-form omega, I get the differential of my Hamiltonian. When I have a vector field, this vector field will have as well compact support on T star M. When I have a vector field, I can define family of diffeomorphisms generated by that vector field, and it is this phi H T. They satisfy this differential equation, and the time one map of this phi H T is called Hamiltonian diffeomorphism. The set of this diffeomorphism form a group with respect to composition. I can set up some metric on this ham group, so-called Hofer metric, and some additional properties. And this sigma N map that I mentioned at the beginning is defined on this ham T star M space. And one side of this, of this result is that I have, so I define some map on ham group. Using that map, I can prove some properties of my group of Hamiltonian diffeomorphism. I can see whether it has an infinite diameter with respect to Hofer metric. And what is more interesting for me, that somehow physics appear here with this zeta being a simplectic quasi-state. So I have two sides of the story in these results. When I work with simplectic manifolds, I am very interested in Lagrangian submanifold. Those are submanifolds. So when I have simplectic manifold, they are always even the dimensional 2N is dimension of any simplectic manifold. Lagrangian submanifolds are a special kind of submanifold that are of dimension N. And when I have Hamiltonian and a Hamiltonian vector field, when Hamiltonian doesn't depend, depend on time, my Hamiltonian diffeomorphism preserves Lagrangian submanifold. If I have some point that, starting at Lagrangian submanifold, this phi H will still, the phi H of that point will be on my Lagrangian submanifold. So those are interesting submanifolds even for physics and for for simplectic geometries. So those are smooth manifolds that are half of the dimension of cotangent bundle. I especially work only with the cotangent bundle. And this omega form vanishes on T L, on tangent space of my Lagrangian submanifold. So this is the definition, but what are examples? I'm looking for examples. When I have surface, any surface with the area form is a simplectic manifold. Smooth curves are Lagrangian submanifolds on that surfaces. It is first completely elementary example, and some more examples are given with the conormal bundle. So I'm coming back to the story where I have closed submanifold. When I have a closed submanifold of N, I can define subset new star N called the conormal bundle as co- vectors that are, that vanish, that vanish on tangent space of my submanifold. And they, those sets are actually Lagrangian submanifolds. Special cases are when I take N to be the entire manifold M. This conormal bundle of M is actually a zero section. It is easiest to draw it on T star of S 1. So cylinder is a cotangent bundle of a circle. And this zero section is a red line. And when I take N to be a point, conormal bundle of a point is a cotangent fiber. It is a green line here. So those are examples that are easiest to draw. So these two previous slides were about definitions, and now I have some construction. So when I have simplectic manifold and Lagrangian submanifold, I want to find some algebraic invariant. And Lagrangian flow homology is one of them. Actually, this Lagrangian flow homology is Morse's version, infinite dimensional Morse theory on not any function, but on action functional. So I'm looking at the paths in the cotangent bundle, but not all paths, since I'm working with Lagrangian flow homology. I'm working with paths that starts at the zero section and and at the conormal bundle. And my action functional is defined, is a map defined on this P space. It goes to the set of real values. It is defined as integral over PDQ minus my Hamiltonian HDT. So I'm also given same Hamiltonian on a, with a compact support on my cotangent bundle. And this is somehow Morse's theory for action functional. So I care about critical points of action functional. And those critical points generates my complex. It is called flow complex. And I'm only working with Z 2 coefficient in order to avoid some problems with orientation. And when I have flow complex, I can define some more complex called filtered subcomplex. It is important for me, we'll see later why. And the filtration is given by the values of the action functional. So subcomplex at level lambda is given by every critical point, is generated by critical points for which the value of action functional is less than this value lambda. When I have a complex, I need differential in order to define some homology. My so-called floor differential is defined by counting holomorphic strips. So here is where complex analysis comes in. So I'm looking at the holomorphic strip as a map from R times 0, 1 interval to the cotangent bundle. Those maps satisfy perturbed Cauchy-Riemann equation. It is this part here. And I have some boundary condition in order to have some good, good setup of analytic details, I need Lagrangian boundary condition. And this red line here, green line here goes to zero section, and the blue one, blue one goes to the conormal bundle of N. And at the end of this holomorphic strips, I have my critical points of action functional. Those are gamma minus and gamma plus here, those on paths. And I'm counting, I'm counting these holomorphic strips, and using them, I can define floor differential. Homology of this complex is called Lagrangian flow homology, denoted by A H F star of this pair, and Hamiltonian H is also important for me, especially because when I define filtered homology, it depends on, on my Hamiltonian H. And the filter homology is the homology of filtered subcomplex. And now, what is important thing at this, I have to skip a few moments. This flow, Lagrangian flow homology is isomorphic to the singular homology of subset N, and especially to Morse's homology of my subset N. And this isomorphism is so-called Poincaré-Schwarz isomorphism. And how, how do I, do I define that isomorphism? Well, I draw this picture because the geometry of that map is really nice and easy to understand. I'm looking at the intersection of gradient trajectories of some Morse function. And so this is the left side of the story. And I intersect them with some holomorphic house strips with appropriate boundary conditions. So what am I doing? I'm intersecting gradient diagonal system with, which is a solution of ordinary differential equation and some perturbed house strip that are a resolution of some partial differential equation. So this is the part where ordinary and partial differential equation are somehow interplaying in, in simplectic story. Using that isomorphism, I can define spectral invariants. So I have these maps here. Morse's or singular homology of my subset N is isomorphic to the Lagrangian flow homology using this PSS isomorphism. And on the other side, I have map. It is not isomorphism, it is only homomorphism from the filter homology to the regular homology. It is generated easily because at the level of complexes, I have an embedding, and I only look at the homology map. And I have following picture. So when I take, what is, I define, I can define spectral invariant of some Morse or singular class alpha that is different from zero as infimum of all values lambda for which this PSS of alpha appears at the level HF lambda. And there is one more way to define this spectral invariance. You can see it as the min-max value of my action functional. And both way are standard, and people are using it. And I'm looking at the special class of invariants that are defined, denoted by L N plus, but special when I take alpha to be equal to the fundamental class of this, my, of my submanifold N. And it turns out, it turns out that these spectral invariants do not depend on Hamiltonian H as far as they generate the same Hamiltonian diffeomorphism. So if I have Hamiltonian H and some K such that F H 1 is the, is the same as F K 1, then the corresponding spectral invariants are the same. And because of that, on the left hand side, I can omit my Hamiltonian and only work with the Hamiltonian diffeomorphism. And now I come to the part where, where I can define my partial quasimorphisms. So partial quasimorphisms, this is actually a theorem, are defined on the group of Hamiltonian diffeomorphism of the cotangent bundle. And they are defined as a limit superior of L N plus of phi to the power N over N. So in general case, this limit doesn't have to exist, but the limit superior exists. It is, it has some finite value. And it is going to be my sigma N value of this map phi. And what is important here? It is homogeneous, meaning that, it is next sentence, meaning that sigma N of power is K times sigma N of the original Hamiltonian diffeomorphism. And partial means that the effect is not constant on the entire ham of T star M. So if I take, what does this mean? If I take not the entire cotangent bundle, but only the disk bundle over the M. So only the co- vectors whose norm is lesser equal than 1. Then on, and I look at the Hamiltonians that that have a support at that disk bundle, then sigma N on that subgroup is going to be a quasimorphism. And what is important is conjugate invariant, meaning that if I put some psi and psi to the minus 1 on the left and the right hand side, I get the same value of this sigma N map. And how do I prove all this? So existence of this map is interesting for exhibit, for seeing some structure on ham group. So this is why it is important to simplectic geometries. I can see if, I can get some information about this ham T star M group using this partial quasimorphism. And how do I prove it? Well, I prove it using some properties of this spectral invariant L N plus. And for that, I need some additional structure, structure of a product on my Hamiltonian flow homology. And to see how this behaves with respect to that product. Some inequalities appear here, but it is a part of, about the proof. I won't go any further about that. And when I have partial quasimorphisms, I can define partial simplectic quasi-states. This zeta map, maps group of smooth Hamiltonians with compact support on T star M to the real field, and it is defined at the sigma N at the Hamiltonian diffeomorphism generated by this, this Hamiltonian H. What are some properties of this zeta map? It satisfies the condition of normalization, zeta of a zero map is equal to 0. It is stable, meaning that when I take a difference of zeta map for two Hamiltonians, it's going to be between mean value and max value of difference of Hamiltonians H and K. H and K have, they have a compact support, so left hand side and right hand side will be some finite values. It is monotone map, meaning if H is lesser equal than K, then corresponding zeta values will be lesser equal. It is homogeneous, meaning that if I multiply H with some S, some real S, but positive, then S comes out on the right hand side. It is invariant under the action of group of Hamiltonian diffeomorphism on this group of compact Hamiltonians. So if I compose H with some psi, that psi is in ham T star M group, I get the same value. And it has vanishing property that zeta of Hamiltonians H that has support which is displacable is equal to 0. I explained already, already that I say that some subset is displacable if I can find some Hamiltonian diffeomorphism psi, such that psi of that subset U intersect with U is empty set. And the last, and I think probably the most important property is this partial quasi-additivity. So it is not additive as our regular quantization. So it is not equal to the zeta H plus zeta K, but it is equal to zeta of H when they commute and when the support of K is displacable. So thank you very much for your time.
Okay. Thank you, Joanna, very much for your talk. Probably there are some questions? I hear one question.
Yes.
I didn't see any direct application of this highly mathematised, I would say, work or talk. Is it possible somehow to apply, to study some, some properties of the universe or so?
Well, I don't know, maybe I'm a mathematician, but what was interesting for me, as I said, is this appearance from purely mathematical story, I get this partial simplectic quasi-state. It was interesting for me because we don't have so many examples of, of that maps. And what was more interesting for me was that we have some example of, of simplectic quasi-state. I saw that in literature, but I didn't see a partial example of a partial simplectic quasi-state. And as a definition, it exists. So what I don't know, maybe it is better personal for someone else, is where, where this partial part appears in physics.
Okay. So in any case, it's influenced with some problems in physics or cosmology or so.
Okay. Probably.
Yeah. Are there any other question, please? We have two more minutes time, so, or discussion or? Yeah? Is there, so I hear someone or what?
I would like to ask moderator to mute anyone who is unmuted, please. Isidora and Victor, could you mute anyone who is unmuted now?
Okay. Probably we can proceed then farther, all right? So the next talk is by Ivan Dmitrievich from the Faculty of Mathematics in Belgrade. The new model of non-local modified gravity. As you can see, some applications of mathematics, because I know him as a mathematician. They are very popular now in mathematics, studying problems in, in cosmology or, or in physics. Okay, Ivan, I would like, I invite you to, to start your talk.
Thank you for your introduction. First of all, I would like to thank the organizers for the opportunity to talk here under these rather strange conditions, I must say. And first of all, I would say that this talk is based on a paper that has been published in journal Symmetry this year with my co-authors Branko Dragovich, Alexey Košeli, Zoran Rakic and Joanna Stankovic. And I will start with, I will talk about non-local modifications of gravity, and we had a few talks about gravity this afternoon, so I will repeat a few things about the motivation in the beginning. The motivation for modification of gravity comes from mainly from a lot of cosmological discoveries during 20th century. Some of the most well-known ones are presented here. I will emphasize, maybe one of the first was Zwicki in 1933, when he discovered high orbital speeds of galaxies in clusters. And later on, Vera Rubin found out about high orbital speeds of stars in the spiral galaxies in the 60s. And of course, in 1998, And of course, in 1998, the accelerated expansion of the universe, which all in some way make room for some disagreements between observations and general relativity. And therefore call for some kind of modification. Also, there is a problem of the Big Bang singularity. And as we all know, physics doesn't like singularities and infinite quantities. And whenever we have such situations, we need to modify theory in a way. And here on the slide, we have the equations of motion of general relativity. Of course, we are going to use the unit such that speed of light is equal to unity throughout this whole talk. And here is explained the notation, the stress energy tensor and other standard geometrical curvature tensors. Also, in principle, we have two ways to modify, to resolve that disagreement between observations on one side and theoretical predictions of GR on the other side. One is to in some way add additional matter. So to say modify the right hand side of the equations of motion. And the other, which is of course considered in this talk, is to modify the left hand side, which leads us to the modification of Einstein theory of gravity itself. If we consider the first approach by adding additional matter, as we have already heard this afternoon, only 5% of the content of the universe is the so-called ordinary matter. And the remaining 95% is dark matter, is split between dark matter and dark energy. And yet we don't have experimental, yet we don't have experimental evidence for neither dark matter or dark energy. Also, general relativity is not validated on the cosmological scale yet. If we then decide to apply another approach and modify the theory itself, there is a lot of freedom how to do it. We usually start from the Einstein-Hilbert action, which is given here with and the modification assumes that we modify this Einstein-Hilbert action by introducing instead of just scalar curvature or some function of scalar curvature, cosmological constants, Ricci tensor and so on. So you can introduce a lot of different a lot of different geometrical terms here, some of them are Gauss-Boune invariant and so on. Of course, the simplest way is to add just the function of scalar curvature that leads to so-called F of R gravity, including matter. And the most interesting for us is the final case where we introduce function F as a function of two things. First of all, the scalar curvature, and second of all, this down-birdion operator or box operator, as it is called often. Oh, sorry, this, there is a slight misprint here. Instead of this square root, it should be written R minus 4 lambda here on blue places. So the, in general, it can be P and Q instead of these square roots. So in general, we can analyze that kind of action. So we have at first, we have R minus 2 lambda, which is standard Einstein-Hilbert term with cosmological constant. And then we have this additional term that is non-local. We have this function F of box, which is in this context analytic function of down-birdion operator. We can analyze even more general terms introducing negative powers of down-birdion and so on. And as we all are well aware, on the biggest scale, on the cosmological scale, we use Friedman-Robinson Wachter metric, given here on the slide. And we can analyze all three cases, so especially flat universe or closed or open. So in all three cases, we have some solutions. And of course, the first part of the job is to derive equations of motion, and they are presented here in a rather compact way. And what I want to say further is that due to symmetries of F R W metric, we have instead of in general having 10 equations, we have only two independent equations that we have to solve. And those two equations are those two equations are usually taken to be trace and the time component of the or 0 0 component of the system. And as we already heard in the previous talks, these are infinite order equations. So we have to infinite order equations, and they are rather complicated to solve. Don't even if they look rather simple on this slide. So we have to introduce some kind of Azese. And one maybe the most natural one is to introduce this Azes here, which is so-called winaranzes. But even that is rather complicated fourth order, sorry, second order, no, fourth order equation in the scale factor AFT. So to simplify things further, we choose a particular form of scale factor, as it is given here on the slide. And we obtain basically two solutions for this, our Azes here. And I want to point out that even already here, we can see that we have this exponential term with T squared in the exponential. And multiplied by it is a constant or T to the one half. And Dragojic had his talk T to the power 2 thirds. And I will remind you that constant T to the power one half and 2 thirds are well-known solutions of the general relativity. Of course, what I didn't mention yet is that we are going to look for vacuum solutions, so without matter in the universe. And I will now discuss these two solutions separately. First, let's start with this pure E to the T squared solution. The Azes is here, taking the form, this constant P is minus 12 times lambda. As you can see, the Hubble parameter is linear in is linear in the cosmic time T, and that is expected, that is similar to the how the cosmological contents behave. R of T is, has one constant term and and the other thing is quadratic in T. And also you can see that for the present cosmological time, this factor lambda times T squared is on order of unity, it's actually about 2. So you can say that at this present moment in time, the cosmological, the scale curvature is the same order as constant lambda. And of course, you put all those conditions into the equations of motion. And you get these two equations on the slide. It's not easy to see that, it's not hard to prove that there is and that this is the solution of the equations of motion if and only if the solution, the function F of box satisfies these two conditions. So this value from Azes, we called P, is at that point, F of P and F prime of P are fixed. So basically, we have an analytic function which have to satisfy that kind of condition. So it has a fixed value at one point and its derivative at that single point, which is basically leaves us a lot of room for further conditions. Basically, you can say that we still have an arbitrary analytic function available for some kind of further investigations. And in particular, you can say that there is one example of such function satisfying these conditions is given here on the slide, which is probably one of the simpler ones. And on the other hand, we can go back to the, I'll go back and the slides to the equations of motion. And if you consider these two equations, these, the right hand side of it corresponds to the terms that are obtained from the general relativity terms. And the whole the left hand side is obtained from the non-local term. So you can say we proceed in a way that we consider that all this non-local contribution in the equations of motion forms some effective stress energy tensor. So it's not really a real matter, but we consider it as an effect of some kind of effective matter. And then we compare it, basically, we rewrite the equations of motion in terms of Friedman equations. And then we obtain the appropriate density and pressure in this form here. And of course, when we find the quotient of those two, we got the parameter W. And it is interesting that for big values of T, this parameter converges to minus 1. So for the big parameters of T or for the late time in the universe, this model somehow approaches the usual behavior of dark energy. That's how, that's what I have to say about this first solution. And we are going to do some similar analysis for the other one containing the square root of T. Also, this scale factor is composed of two terms. The first is, of course, consider the radiation-dominated universe, the square root of T itself is radiation-dominated universe while we have this additional exponential function here. And now, okay, the constant in the Azes is now minus 3 times lambda. So it's again the similar, in the same order F as cosmological constant. Now, in the Hubble parameter, we got two terms. The first one is dominant when the time T is small, so in the early universe during inflation, for example. So this first term is dominant during inflation and early times. And this second term, sorry, this second term is dominant in the late time cosmology. Now, the scale curvature is, has the similar structure as before. And again, we put all the conditions we obtained into the equations of motion. And again, we get the similar conditions on the function F. Again, we have analytic function that is that have to satisfy this type of equation. So it has fixed value at one point, and of course, its derivative is 0 at this point P. And again, we can rearrange the constants and obtain obtain the example of the function F of box that will be an example for this particular solution. So for these two solutions, we can have two different functions F. Later on, I will address the issue if we can have one function F that will satisfy both models. And yes, we can do that, but it's rather more complicated. Again, employing the same procedure, we again obtained effective density and pressures. And finally, again, we consider the parameter W. And again, in the late times, it tends to the minus 1, which is what in general we get by the dark energy. So it has similar appearance in that way. Apart from these two solutions, which are most interesting ones, we can have a few more. Mainly, the solutions with a constant scalar curvature can be obtained. That scalar curvature is done equal to 4 times lambda. And of course, depending on the parameter k, depending on the parameter k, we have those free expressions, so if k is equal to 0, then the scale factor is exponential function, so that's basically the seater. And we have these cosine hyperbolicus and sine hyperbolicus solutions for k equal, k different than 0. Of course, these three solutions are for the positive values of cosmological constant and if we want cosmological constant to be negative, then we have only one solution, which is periodic and singular. Also, it's worth mentioning what happens when we want the scalar curvature to be exactly 0. And it's worth mentioning that in that case, we have Minkowski as a solution and also Milner solution as well. So the scale factor is constant and for Milner, the scale factor is a linear function of cosmic time. And those two, so these solutions here does not require any constraints on the function f of box. And to summarize in the end, so we took the scale factor of the form a times t to the power n times exponential of some constant minus gamma over 12 times t squared. And the linear Azaz of this form, we found two solutions for n equals 0 and n equals 1/2. In both cases, we obtained the solutions that function f should satisfy conditions like this, so it has a fixed value at one point and its derivative at that point is 0. Also, we can find examples of such functions in this form as a constant times box over lambda times exponential of B times box over lambda, box over lambda is really nice to work with because it's a dimensionless form of this operator box. And that's why it is easy to work with. And if we want a function f of box that will satisfy conditions for both these solutions, so don't, you don't want one function for each solution, then you can take a function in this form, so some constant times box over lambda. But in the exponential, you don't, you can't go with linear function, you need a 3rd degree polynomial, so cubic polynomial with some suitably chosen constants a, b, c, and d, which can be derived, but are not really nice to be put on this presentation. And finally, in the end, I will present a few of our references. And I will once again, maybe underline this first reference, which is the basis for this, which was the basis for this talk. Thank you for your attention.
Okay, thank you Ivan. Are there questions for this talk?
Actually, could I ask question?
Yes, of course.
Actually, I have a couple of questions. So at the beginning, you said that there are disagreements between GR and observations. I think except that matter and dark energy problems, there are no disagreement. Do you agree or not?
Well, I will repeat, yes, there are some disagreements.
You said that there are disagreements between GR and observations. So in principle, except dark matter problem, there are no disagreements with observations. Because old, sorry for interruption.
Okay, go on.
Because old-fashioned theories of gravity, always they have lambda term. It was not a big problem because it's always its natural part of geometrical part of Einstein equations. Lambda term, so in this case, only dark matter is a problem, a real problem. But dark energy, lambda term is still a good explanation for all observations. It's not a problem.
Well, dark energy, there are no disagreements, only if you include dark energy and dark matter.
Okay, it's, sorry, but it's, I'm repeating again. So dark energy is some kind of propaganda. It was introduced by Michael Turner to ask money for this investigation from Department of Energy. So because it's still lambda term is explanation for all observational data. Do you agree or not? Lambda term could explain everything or not. At the moment, yes. Okay, but next question. So why do you use Friedmann solution for generalization of, of gravity law? Why, it's if you generalize theories, maybe solution or maybe not, it's, who knows? It's, it's not standard.
It's not standard, well, it's just an observation that this solution we obtained in some way is a product of Friedmann solution and and something, and this additional exponential term, so.
Okay, but also you wrote some, let us say, series of, of box operators. And what is that? I don't know.
It's a Donlson operator.
What?
Donlson.
Donlson, okay, okay, it's Donlson. But what is that? If there is, if there are no metric between these, let us say, operators, you cannot consider series as I understood, or it's formal, let us say, formal, formal, some formal thing. Because finite set of this, finite sum of this operator is clear. But if you are conce- considering series, I don't know. Because for convergence, you have to introduce metric, etc., etc. I don't know how to deal with this construction.
Well, metric can be introduced and it's not very, for a mathematician, it's nothing unusual to deal with a series.
No, no, yeah, I'm a mathematician, according to my education, I'm a mathematician.
Okay.
So because there is a language, so what is that? It's, you have, you have to describe class of functions for, for, for your, let us say, operation.
Okay, yes, well, you have the underlying, the underlying for this is, there is a manifold of free one signature manifold. And you can start with metric on that basic four-dimensional manifold, which represents the universe and you can so-called lift it up to the metric of, to the metric on the tensor stuff.
I don't know, I don't understand.
Tensor bundles.
How, how to proceed with infinite series of box operators, I don't understand. But also, it's very strange.
Can be done.
It's, it's very strange that you want to guess gravity law from behavioral scale factor. You know, because it's, it's, let us say, it's a strange approach. Because, because usually standard procedure, people, let us say, suggest to guess, let us say, gravity law and after that, they're calculating on all conclusions. But you try to use some function like solution of your gravity theory. But in this case, probably you only one solution. But for instance, GR has more than 100 solutions. And at least 50 solutions have applications, physical applications. So in this case, certainly, they will not, you will not explain, let us say, you will not find other solution, this, this generalization, it's, it's, it's clear for me. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. So is there any other question? If not, then we shall proceed to the last talk today. Marco Voinovic, cosmological constant problem in discretized quantum gravity. So I would like to ask Marco to proceed to his talk, okay?
Okay. Thank you for inviting me. And just a second, I need to share my screen. Okay, can you all see my slides? So my, my background is in quantum gravity and this, since this conference is, is about astronomy and astrophysics and so on, I decided to, to give a lecture about the, I mean, the closest I can get to the, to the, to this kind of audience is by discussing the cosmological constant problem in a certain, in a certain setup. So I will present this work that I have done with, in collaboration with Alexander Mikovitch from Portugal. And the, it will go like this, first, I will give you a short introduction into the cosmological constant problem and what it is actually. Then I will discuss shortly the cosmological constant in quantum field theory. And then I will pass on to the cosmological constant in quantum gravity. And then I will specify myself, I will restrict myself to the so-called Regge Quantum Gravity Model, which is especially convenient for discussing the cosmological constant. And at the end, I will present some conclusions. So let me give you a short introduction. So if you consider the classical theory of the standard model Lagrangian coupled to general relativity, there are three parameters which have, which have units, which are dimensionful. So there is the Planck length, which fixes the gravitational scale. Or if you will, this is the Newton's gravitational constant. There is the cosmological constant lambda, which determines the cosmological scale and there is the Higgs mass, which determines the electroweak scale. Now, if you take the ratios of the latter two with respect to the Planck length, for example, you get the, the dimensionless numbers, the coupling for, for the, for the cosmological constant, which is an extremely small number, 10 to the minus 122. That is what we get from the experiment. And similarly, for the, for the Higgs coupling, you get the number, a dimensionless number of 10 to the minus 34. So these things compared to other, other, all other couplings that are present, which are of order 1 or, or so, or so. And this makes these two particular numbers unusually small. So of course, when you look at it at face value, there is nothing wrong with that. I mean, they, it, it can just be like a fact of the world. But it sort of, at some intuitive level, it, it sort of begs the question, you know, like, why, why, why are they so small? So people are trying to give a certain type of explanation for these two numbers. Or hope that, that the fact that these numbers are so small is not just a fact of the world, but it is, it reflects our lack of understanding of something in physics, which would give rise to, to explaining this, these two numbers. So this is not the, so the cosmological constant problem per se is not really a problem at this level. But it is a curious question to ask. So why does this happen? Now, we can go on and discuss this in, actually, in the framework of the quantum field theory in curved spacetime, which is a more appropriate setting for, for, for the, for the study of the cosmological constant. And in this framework, the problem, the, 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 the issue that, that appears is, becomes even worse. So how does this work? So we consider a quantum field, we consider the expectation value of the stress energy tensor of some matter fields at, for example, at one loop order. And it has the classical value and it has the, the one loop value. So we evaluate this stress energy tensor at the ground state, so that the classical stress energy is equal to 0. And we obtained that the, the, the expectation value for the stress energy tensor is equal to the one loop correction, the quantum correction to, for the matter fields. Then we take a peek into this famous textbook by Beryl and Davis and see that after some work, this, this, this thing can be re-expressed as, as a series in, in, as a sort of a power series in, in curvature of spacetime. Where we have all these dimensionless constants, these coefficients in front of the series are basically of order 1 for a generic choice of the, of the matter field. Now, one can substitute this effective stress energy tensor into the classical Einstein equations. And one can read off the so-called one-loop renormalized value of the cosmological constant. So, or the effective value, which is actually the bare cosmological constant, which was present in the Einstein equations from the beginning. And then there is this metric contribution, which comes basically from this first term here in the, in the effective stress energy tensor. And it is equal to, to, to this thing. Now, why is this a problem? Or why is this even worse? Well, we see from experiment that the effective value of the cosmological constant is supposed to be of order 10 to the minus 122. The bare cosmological constant is an arbitrary number, we have absolutely nothing, it was a free parameter of the theory. And this additional term is of order 1. So in order to satisfy this equation, we need to choose the bare cosmological constant. And we need to choose this to arrange for a cancellation up to 122 decimal places. Now, this is called fine tuning. Of course, one can choose such, such a value for, for, for lambda bare. But, you know, it's, it's kind of pushing it, you know, you have two numbers which are of order 1 and they are exactly the same up to, you know, one, first 122 decimal places and then they have, just happened to become different. So this is, this is a somewhat more exacerbated way to, to, to spell out that this this cosmological constant problem is something that we really don't understand, rather than just a fact of life. So and it is called fine tuning. Now, still, you may say, okay, it may just be like that, but, you know, everything, our, 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 our whole intuition of, of doing physics and doing math and everything, basically is screaming at, at us that this is, that there is something wrong here, right? Or there is something that needs explaining in, in, in this cancellation. So what is the problem with this? I want to argue that the, the idea of, that the study of the quantum, the study of the cosmological constant problem within the framework of quantum field theory in curved spacetime, in the classical curved spacetime, this is actually a wrong, wrong approach. this is actually a wrong, wrong approach. And, you know, first of all, gravity is, it should not be treated as a classical field. It should be treated as, as a quantum field, just like the other fields. And this is an obvious elephant in the room. So, I mean, this is, this is an obvious thing that, that is wrong with this approach. Moreover, gravity is not renormalizable. So there are no renormalization group equations that can be formulated. And there is no concept of running of the cosmological constant. There is no beta function. All the framework and formalism of quantum field theory that, that we are used to is, is basically inapplicable for a theory which is not renormalizable. And finally, the quantum field theory is, is an effective thing rather than a fundamental thing, right? So one can understand that any quantum field theory that we have, for example, the standard model, is just an effective low energy limit of something more fundamental, which may not even be a quantum field theory as such. But some, some more, more, the theory with a different structure in a sense. And in that sense, the, the whole fine tuning problem of the cosmological constant may happen to be the artifact of the approximation of going from fundamental theory to the effective quantum field theory. And I'm not discussing naturalness in this, in this talk. But there is some, there is, there are certain issues that, about naturalness as well in this, in this setup, which also suggests that the, the effectiveness, the effective nature of quantum field theory basically is one of the problems for trying to explain this kind of very small numbers. So the, the, the bottom line is that we really need the theory of quantum gravity. We need a full fundamental theory of everything, so to speak. I'm, I'm speaking loosely when I say theory of everything. Basically, we need, we need a theory at the fundamental level, at, at the level of the Planck scales and at the level, a theory which can cover all scales that can be covered in a sense. So how, how do we do that? I mean, the, the theory of quantum gravity, the theory of quantum gravity has not been formulated yet. We have many models, but, many different models. But we don't know which, which of these models is correct, if any, because there are no experiments to, to, to test against. So we need to figure out the general procedure of how to discuss the cosmological constant in this setup. Now, this was figured out, for example, by, famously by Joe Pol, by the late Joe Polchinski. And it goes into three steps. First, you construct a quantum gravity model. Then you formulate a quantum mechanical or, or quantum field theory or some kind of observable corresponding to the cosmological constant within this model. And then you study its spectrum, right? So it's an observable, it's like, like a self-adjoint operator, it has a spectrum. And then you want to answer two questions. First, does the observed, the value of the cosmological constant belong to the spectrum of your theory? And the second question, why do we observe this particular point in the spectrum, if it is in the spectrum? So the first question is something that is tangible. This is something that can be actually discussed. The second question is a bit tricky and it has to do with at face value, it, it can have, it reaches the level of interpretations of quantum mechanics and what does measurement do? Do we collapse the wave function of the universe? And all kinds of funny and fuzzy questions that I don't want to get into and, and we do not belong in this, in this talk. So famously, Stephen Weinberg applied this kind of recipe to string theory. And basically, he, in a nutshell, he took string theory, he added the multiverse, he added the anthropic principle. And he obtained that the effective cosmological constant should be a very, very small number. And this is kind of, this is like a well-celebrated result of Weinberg. But that is not the only possible thing one can do. There are alternatives, alternative explanations, and I will present you one of them. So I will study the model, which is basically the, called the Regge Quantum Gravity Model, which is based on, on a set of physical assumptions. First one, that nature has, has a cutoff at, at the Planck scale in the sense that there is, there exists a physical triangulation of spacetime. So I do not consider spacetime ontologically to be a smooth manifold, but to be a piecewise flat manifold in a, in a sense. And this is in principle observable. Now, these pieces are very, very small. They, they, they are of the size of the Planck scale. So what we observe effectively in nature is a sort of a smooth, smooth-like structure. But when you zoom in to, to, to the Planck scale, you will be able in principle to observe the, the, the physical triangulation. So that is one of, one of, one of the assumptions. The next assumption is the, is the so-called Regge, Regge action or the Regge approximation of general relativity, where we don't consider it as an approximation, but we take it as a fundamental theory. So we describe gravity, the, the, the degrees of freedom of gravity with, with the edge lengths of this, in this triangulation. Now, this is fundamental. And the metric and the smooth manifold and everything else that we know from general relativity comes out of this in a, in a semi-classical approximation. So then we, we require the theory to have a well-defined semi-classical limit, which is this, this thing about general relativity and smooth manifold and the, the standard model and. And the fourth assumption is the one that will help us determine, I mean, help us try to solve the, the cosmological constant problem. And this is basically the statement that quantum fluctuation of matter fields, the vacuum fluctuations of matter fields do not gravitate. Now, there are some controversial statements in the literature about whether they do or do not gravitate. I can address them if you, if you like, but this is not really the point. Now, I will specify exactly what I mean by this later on. So the idea now is, given these assumptions, I want to formulate the model. I want to evaluate the spectrum of the cosmological constant observable and then compare it to experiment. That's, that's the, the idea, the, the recipe of Joe Polchinski. So how do we do that? Well, I cannot really get into a lot of details. In, I mean, I don't have time for a lot of details. But suffice to say that one can define the so-called path integral or the, the, the quantum field theory in the sense of Feynman for the Regge Quantum Gravity coupled to matter fields. And so this object is the object that we want to define. And this, the right-hand side here is the definition. It has two, I mean, it is, this is a sketch actually of the, of the more rigorous definition. I didn't write down all, all of the details here. But it has two main properties. One property is that we integrate, we, we take the path integral over all edge lengths in the triangulation. And edge lengths are naturally positive numbers. So they, they go from zero to infinity. And this is a thing that is different from the ordinary quantum field theory, where the, the, usually the fields that you integrate over can take any value from minus infinity to infinity, any, any real value or any complex, any, any number in the complex, depending on the field. But they were, they always span the, like, the whole real line. And, and the, the edge lengths in gravity span only half of it. And this is the important piece in the discussion. Now, when we use this to calculate the semi-classical limit, which is defined by the Planck length going to zero, I will not describe the details of the calculation. But there are two pieces, there are two typical integrals that appear in, in, in the, in the calculation. One of them is the usual Gauss integral that we all know from the, from quantum field theory calculations. And this one comes from the matter sector basically because the, the, the matter is, is being integrated from minus infinity to infinity. However, the gravitational part gives us an additional type of integral, which is basically the same integrant function, the, the exponent of the, of the square. But now it, in this case, it doesn't go over the whole real line, but only it, it has a certain cutoff at a certain length. So this, when you integrate this, you basically get the error function, right? So this is related to the error function. And the error function in the limit where, when L Planck, where the Planck length goes to, goes to zero, has this kind of asymptotic expansion, which has, and this is the crucial point, this is where everything happens. So this is where all the magic happens. This asymptotic expansion features a term here, an exponent, which is a non-analytic function in the Planck length. So at the point where the Planck length goes to zero, you cannot, you are not allowed to expand this into a power series, right? So this is a meaning of the non-analytic function. And this is the key property that we are going to use to establish the smallness of the cosmological constant. Now, how do we do that? Well, first of all, there is this mu term here in the, in the, in the definition of the path integral, which basically represents the exponent of, of the cosmological constant term. This lambda measure, it is a measure term essentially. So this lambda measure is another free parameter that we are required to introduce into the theory in order to make this whole path integral convergent. So we want to, we, we want to avoid the infrared divergences in the theory for large values of, of, of the Planck length, for, for the large values of edges, of lengths compared to the Planck length. So this, this measure term has to be strictly greater than zero in this sense. Or otherwise, the integral will not converge. On the other hand, we want the, this integral to have the correct semi-classical behavior. And in order to have this correct, correct semi-classical behavior, we need to suppress this non-analytic term. Because if this non-analytic, the contribution of the non-analytic term will, will deviate from, from our semi-classical description. Because it is non-analytic, it cannot be, it is, it is invisible in the semi-classical description. So basically, we need to require that this coefficient in front of this term is extremely small so that the asymptotic expansion is almost well-defined. And this, this translates into the requirement that this parameter coming from the measure must be much smaller than one over Planck length squared. Now, this is all, all, both of these properties, this, this equation, both of these inequalities here are actually a property of the quantum gravity kinematics. This is the consequence of the fact that we have used a Regge Quantum Gravity and that we have put the world on a triangulation and, and, and that kind of things. The, the fact that we are integrating from zero to infinity and so on. So this is not a property of anything except the quantum, I mean, this is a, really, really a quantum gravity effect. So now, how to calculate, given this structure, how do we calculate actually the cosmological constant? Well, I'm not going to go into great details here either. Suffice to say that there is this effective action equation in quantum field theory. We can, we can basically generalize that to the straightforward way to, to the quantum gravity setup and study the effective classical action for a given quantum theory. So given the ordinary classical action that we start from, which has the Regge quantum, the Regge gravity sector, which has the matter sector and which has the bare cosmological constant that was there from the beginning, like the classical one. We put the matter fields into the ground state and the effective action reduces to a certain more simpler equation. And we can basically, it is impossible to integrate the matter fields exactly analytically, because this is a complicated calculation. It is very hard to do even at the level of one-loop calculations, let alone exactly. But we do not really need to calculate it. We can just evaluate it to, to, to be the exponent of a cosmological constant type term plus everything else, which is not proportional to, which, which, which is not like, like a cosmological constant term. So we don't know the exact value of this metric contribution to quantum, to, to the cosmological constant. But we know that it does exist. And we basically know from one-loop calculations that it is of order one and so on and so forth. So when you calculate the, there, there are some additional steps like quick rotation and so on and so forth. When the dust settles, we get the, the, the effective value for the cosmological constant as a sum of three terms. Now, there is the bare cosmological constant, which was there from the beginning, from the classical general relativity action. There is the matter contribution, which I discussed, which is the same as in quantum field theory in curved spacetime. And there is this third term, which comes from this measure term that I discussed earlier. So this is a difference, this is a difference from, from the, this third term, the presence of the third term is the different piece, this is the difference between the, the approach that we had from, in, in quantum field theory in curved spacetime. So this is the quantum gravity effect. So now let us study the spectrum. What, what do we have? So we know that the effective term, the effective cosmological constant is a very small number. The bare cosmological constant is arbitrary. The matter cosmological constant is something which is of order one. And we know that the measure term is something that is strictly greater than zero, but much smaller than one because of the requirements of semi-classical limit and, and the infrared convergence. So basically, what do we do now? Given this, this setup, we can basically choose the, this arbitrary bare cosmological constant to cancel the metric cosmological, the metric contribution as was going, as was happening in, in quantum field theory in curved spacetime. But there, we needed to cancel them up to 122 decimal places. Now, we are canceling them exactly. So we choose the bare cosmological constant to exactly cancel, cancel the, the metric contribution. And which means that there is no fine tuning here. I'm not tuning anything to cancel up to certain, up to a certain decimal place or something like that. I'm canceling it exactly. So this leaves me with the, with the effective cosmological constant, which is actually equal to the measure term, to this, this third term here, which comes from the, which is a quantum gravity contribution. And now I can test, the, the measure term basically needs to satisfy these two, these two requirements. It needs to be bigger than zero, but much smaller than one. And I can see if my effective values of the cosmological constant satisfies these requirements. And well, you know, ten to the minus 122 is pretty good fit for, for this kind of, for this kind of requirements. So one can argue from this model that, that the non-zero value of the cosmological constant is actually a pure quantum gravity effect. So let me conclude, because I'm almost out of time. I was arguing that the framework of quantum field theory in curved spacetime is really not suitable for the discussion of the cosmological constant. It has too many problematic points, conceptual, conceptual points that are not really addressed well. The framework of full quantum gravity is suitable, assuming that we do have a model of quantum gravity, which is a problem on its own. But the analysis of the cosmological constant is a well-defined thing and we can study it if we are given a quantum gravity model. Now, I gave you an example of the Regge Quantum Gravity Model, where the smallness of the cosmological constant is, is a sort of a weak prediction. It is weak in the sense that I have just an inequality here. I don't have the, I, I don't have the number. I don't have the exact value of the cosmological constant. But you know, it is better than nothing in a sense. And moreover, this, the, the important piece is that this kind of prediction, this result is a non-perturbative result. So it is completely invisible in the perturbation theory. And this is because a non-analytic term in the, in the, from the air coming from. And this is because a non-analytic term in the, in the, from the air, coming from the error function in the, in the semi-classical limit, is invisible. In, I mean, when you, when you try to expand this term into power series, you will get zero plus zero plus zero plus zero, and basically end up with, with just zeros. So perturbative theory does not see this, this term. So it is impossible to discuss this term from the point of view of, for example, perturbative quantum gravity or something like that. And in this model, the non-zero value of the cosmological constant is interpreted as a pure quantum gravity effect, because we have canceled the matter contribution with the bare cosmological constant exactly, without fine-tuning. And we are left with the quantum gravity term. And of course, it, one can argue that it fits quite well uh, to the, to the predicted spectrum of, of our observer. And finally, of course, this is completely different from the Weinberg approach, in the sense that it has no appeal to the multiverse or the, or the anthropic principle or any of kind of these, these kind of things, which some people consider uh, tricky in the, in the certain conceptual sense. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Marco. So, probably some short questions, because we are out of time. But uh, okay, is there any question? If not, then we are finished for today, so I would ask, thank you once more, Marco. And I would like to, to call the host of the, the organizer to say probably a few words for tomorrow or something, thank you.